Hey, good morning, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order and Counselor Crick's going to say a short prayer before we get started.
Lord, we thank you for this day that we can come here and just enjoy the time in the MD of Bonneville. Thank you also for the farmers getting their crops off. And if there's anyone that sells anything out there, pray you'd help them to continue to get the last little bit off. Also ask, Lord, that you'd give us wisdom today as we make decisions in this meeting and in the future. Pray your blessing and your protection on all of the staff and everyone that lives in this MD of Bonneville. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Counselor Crick. Just wondering if there's any additions to the agenda. I see one here for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Members of the council, yes, administration will be recommending two additions to the agenda. Under Development Application 7.3, Development Application Number 2022-D-196, Communication Tower. And under 12.1, CAO Overview, FOIP Sections 21 and 24.
What was that again? Al, sorry?
FOIP Sections 21 and 24 under CAO Overview 12.1.
All right, thank you. Any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I need a motion to accept the agenda. Thank you. Counselor Crick makes the motion to accept the agenda as amended. I'll call for the vote. Yes? Well, Ben, you didn't vote yet, I guess. No, it's good now. Yeah, Carrie, thank you. Okay, I'm looking for the Adoption of the Minutes, regular meeting, September 28, 2022. Yes, Deputy Reeve?
I'll make the motion. Everything looks in order.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve, for making a motion on accepting the minutes from September 28, 2022. Any discussion on this? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. I guess we're on to 7, 7.1, Development Application. Hey, good morning. It's on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. This is Development Permit Application 2022-D-195. The applicant is CNRL, Canadian Natural Resources, and the owner is Crown Land. The applicant is applying for a 90-foot freestanding telecommunications tower. The property is located on the former ID 349 lands, south of Foster Creek Wolf Den Camp. Adjacent properties are Crown Land. The applicant would like to construct a 90-foot freestanding telecommunications tower for cellular, two-way, and Wi-Fi coverage. This is located at an existing well pad on the Cold Lake Air Weapons Range. This is authorized, this use is authorized to be applied for by the Alberta Energy Regulators under a MLS disposition held by CNRL. There are no towers or residences within 500 meters of the proposed location. The application satisfies the antenna system citing policy 3A.009, as there are no dwellings within 100% of the tower height, and it is on an agricultural parcel. Adjacent landowner letters were not sent out, as there are no adjacent landowners. Recommendation for Development Application 2022-D-195 is approve the request for a 90-foot freestanding telecommunications tower as a discretionary use as per Part 6 of the General Regulations and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions: agricultural setback as per Section 69.6 of the Land Use Bylaw. The minimum setback shall be 38 meters from the front yard, 6 meters from the east, from the sites, and rear yard. The development shall comply with Health Canada's Safety Code 6. Applicable electrical permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act, compliance with all regulations of Innovation, Science, and Economic Development Canada, compliance with Transportation Canada and NAV Canada Regulations. The tower shall be constructed in compliance with the National Building Code and the Canadian Standard Association, and respect good engineering practices, including structural adequacy. When communication towers and facilities become obsolete and/or damaged and unrepaired, they shall be moved, immediately removed, and the development site shall be reclaimed within six months of the cessation of operation at the expense of the tower owner.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve Fedeau?
Yeah, thanks for that. I'd like to go with the motion. Option number one, the council approved this with no additional conditions.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fedeau, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves Development Permit Application Number 2022-D-195, 90-foot freestanding telecommunications tower within northwest 469, fourth west of the 4th M, as discretionary use pursuant to Part 6 of the General Regulations and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Canadian Natural Resources Limited. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie. Thank you. On to 7.2.
This is Development Permit Application 2022-D-198. The applicant and owner is Paul Hooseroe. The applicant is applying for a renewal of a family care unit. The property is located northeast of Range Road 451 and Township 615. Adjacent properties are country residential and quarter section remnants. The applicant would like to renew a family care unit for his spouse's cousin Lance Wright. An ATCO trailer is currently being used and was placed on the property prior to 2012. The applicant provided a note from Lance's primary care provider confirming a need to be in close proximity to family. The renewal was delayed due to family contemplating the living arrangements and care needs going forward and the time required to obtain a note from the primary care provider. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on September 19, 2022, and we received no concerns. Recommendation for Development Application 2022-D-198 is approve the request for a renewal of a family care unit located at southwest 36615 west of the 4th Meridium as a discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 47 of the General Regulations, and Part 7, Section 73.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions: the expiry of this permit is to be December 31, 2023. The permit is valid for the care of Lance Wright only. The unit shall be removed once it is no longer required. And we do have the applicant here if you have questions to direct to him.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll move that we approve this.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves Development Permit Application Number 2022-D-198 as a family care unit renewal within southwest of 6, uh, sorry, southwest of 36615 west of the 4th M as a discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 47 of the General Regulations, and Part 7, Section 73.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Paul Hooseroo as per the recommendation presented. Any discussion on this? Sorry if I pronounced your last name wrong. I probably did. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. On to 8 subdivision, 8, oh, sorry. Oh, yes. There it is, right on my sheet. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, everybody. Go ahead.
Okay. This is Development Permit 2022-D-196. The applicant is Canadian Natural Resources Limited. The owner is Crown Land. The applicant is applying for a 90-foot freestanding telecommunications tower. The property is located on the former ID 349 lines, south of the Foster Creek Wolf Den Camp. Adjacent properties are Crown Land. The applicant would like to construct a 90-foot freestanding telecommunications tower for cellular, two-way, and Wi-Fi coverage. The location is an existing well pad on, in the Cold Lake Air Weapons Range. This, this use is authorized to be applied for by the Alberta Energy Regulator under a MLS disposition held by CNRL. There are no towers or residences within 500 meters of the proposed location, and the tower, the application satisfies the antenna system citing policy 3A.009, as there are no dwellings within 100% of the tower height, and it is on agricultural parcel. Adjacent landowner letters were not sent out, as there are no adjacent landowners. Recommendation for Development Application 2022-D-196 is approve the request for a 90-foot freestanding telecommunications tower as a discretionary use as per Part 6 of the General Regulations and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions: as per Section 69.6 of the Land Use Bylaw, minimum setback shall be 38 meters from the center line of adjacent public roads, 6 meters from the side and rear yards. The development shall comply with Health Canada Safety Code 6. Applicable electrical permits are required as per Alberta Safety Codes Act, compliance with all regulations of Innovation, Science, and Economic Development Canada, compliance with Transportation Canada and NAV Canada Regulations. The shower, tower shall be constructed in compliance with the National Building Code and the Canadian Standard Association, and respect good engineering practices, including structural adequacy. When communication towers and facilities become obsolete and/or damaged and unrepaired, they shall be immediately removed and the development site reclaimed within six months of cessation of operation at the expense of the tower owner.
Hey, thank you. Deputy Reeve?
Yeah, would you like to first, I'd like to make the motion to approve this. It's exciting to see these towers come up. That means, you know, it's a positive growth in our area up there, and yeah, I'd be happy to make this.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fedeau, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves Development Permit Application Number 2022-D-196 as a 90-foot freestanding telecommunication tower within southwest of 969, four west of the 4th M as discretionary use pursuant to Part 6 of General Regulations and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Canada, Canadian Natural Resources Limited as per recommendation presented. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we can move to 8, 8.1.
Good mornings. Okay, subdivision application number 2022-S-012. The applicant proposes to subdivide 1 16-acre parcel from a previously unsubdivided agricultural quarter section. The owners are Charles Mo and Kim Menzinger. The subject site is located on Highway 41, approximately a half mile south of Highway 28. Administration has received and has sent notification of proposed subdivision to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with the deadline of September 26 to submit concerns to be considered at the October 12 council meeting. No concerns have been received regarding this application. The application does meet all conditions of Municipal Government Act subdivision and development regulations and the lower Athabasca Regional Plan, Municipal Development Plan, and the Land Use Bylaw, and therefore we recommend it be approved as per conditions. I would like to draw your attention to the handout that was presented earlier this morning. It does have an amendment to conditions. So condition number one is the legal and physical access to proposed parcels and remnants. And then number two is the amendment from Alberta Transportation to which pursuant to Section 661 and 662 of Municipal Government Act and Section 6 point, pardon me, 3.9 of the Municipal Development Plan, that the owner develop to dedicate a 30-meter-wide service road right-of-way across the entire frontage of the proposed parcel along Highway 41 to be registered by plan of survey at no cost to Alberta Transportation. B, they construct a 30-meter-wide service road across the frontage of the proposed parcel along Highway 41, so as provide physical access to the remnant parcel, and dedicate a 30-meter-wide service road right-of-way across the north portion of the remnant parcel along the entire Highway 41 frontage. In this instance, Alberta Transportation is willing to accept the service road registration by caveat. There is an attached map at the back of your parcel from Alberta Transportation showing a picture depicting what their requirements are. Condition number three is a real property report. Number four is sewer compliance with the Alberta Safety Codes Act and the Alberta Public Health Act, and taxes to be paid in full.
Thank you. That's 41, just heading into Kehewin First Nations, correct?
Yes, that's just south of, south of Highway 28 intersection.
Yeah, gotcha. Yeah, just looking for a motion.
I'm just curious what the purpose of that 30 meters, is that kind of a standard thing? Or what?
The 30-meter access, Alberta Transportation will not give access to lands from the highway for other than agricultural use at this point, and it's quite an extensive process to get that put into place. So what happens at the time of subdivision? They require the service road to be conducted across the entire frontage, which would then allow access to any of the remnant portions. The 30-meter dedication they're asking for that goes from the proposed parcel northward would be for future road widening.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and make the motion then.
What do they have to say about that? They have not, they can't say nothing about it?
Yeah, they have the option to appeal the recommendation through the Land and Rights Tribunal if they so choose.
Yes.
So would the, so would that 30-meter kind of be all along the road then, or what?
As it shows on the map.
No, I mean, like, on other people's parcels, all the way down, or is that just on theirs?
If subdivision happens on, on any other property along the highway, it'll be taken at that time. That's typically what we've had across other subdivisions as well. Just this one, we've actually got a photo from Transportation depicting what they are requiring.
Because there's definitely houses that are not even 30 meters away from the...
Yeah, they were made years ago.
Yeah.
Okay, just looking for a motion. Or see, you made a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, Counselor Skarsen, on making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves subdivision application number 2022-S-012 to subdivide 1 16-acre parcel from agriculture quarter section northeast 167 west of the 4th M belonging to Charles Mo and Kim Menzinger as per conditions presented. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a great day. 9.2.1.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council.
Morning.
On September 21, 2022, the Director of Emergency Management presented draft bylaw number 1809, Emergency Management Bylaw, to the Committee of the Whole. The draft bylaw was discussed and no changes were recommended at that time. Administration is therefore requesting that bylaw 1809, Emergency Managed Bylaw, excuse me, Emergency Management Bylaw be given first, second, and third reading by council. All concerned parties, including the Summer Villages of Pelican Narrows and Bonneville Beach, and the Village of Glendon, agree with the contents of this proposed bylaw following the passing of this bylaw by the MD of Bonneville. The Alberta Emergency Management Agency will take a copy before the minister responsible for the Emergency Management Act and request a ministerial order which will formalize and make legal the relationship between the MD of Bonneville and the Summer Villages. Concerning the Village of Glendon, once there is substantive bylaw is in place detailing this arrangement, our relationship with them will be formalized and legal according to the contents of both bylaws. Subject 20 changes recommended by council, of course, is a variety of documents attached. Development of the framework is largely completed. That said, training MD staff, exercising our program, and procuring equipment and supplies to effectively deal with an emergency or disaster will take funding over several years. Budget discussions are currently underway for fiscal 2023, and the appropriate funding will be requested. Recommended action is that bylaw 1809, being a bylaw of Municipal District of Bonneville 87, to establish an emergency advisory committee and regional emergency management agency be given first reading, that bylaw be given second and third reading, and that council adopt the emergency advisory committee terms of reference and emergency management agency terms of reference as presented. And furthermore, the council approves the emergency management partnership agreement with the Village of Glendon and the Borderlands Emergency Management Mutually Agreement as presented.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, sorry.
Thanks for the light reading material. Nodded off twice last night to reading this. Just kidding. So into, so Appendix C, just want to have an idea of how this is going to be run. So Appendix C, page 2, under membership, 1 composition. In your, I guess, perfect world, would everybody have to be on there, or just certain parts of the, I guess, the committee or the board sitting on this?
Through the Reeve, Counselor Fedeau. I'm not sure I understand the question. When you say all, everybody on there, everybody on that list would be a formalized member of the committee?
Okay.
Yes.
So not, not just one of, but everybody on that list will be on?
Correct. And sorry, we're talking about the agency, not the committee.
Correct, yeah.
So, yes, everybody that would be listed would be a formal member of that agency.
Okay. Sounds good, thanks.
Any other questions? Yep, Counselor Crick?
We talked about it, Committee of the Whole, and I guess I just wanted to say that I don't necessarily like the way that some of this stuff is worded. It seems a little bit authoritarian. And I understand that it's coming down more from the provincial government, and it's just something that we kind of have to do here. But I wish we had more thing instead of state of emergency, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of authority given to that committee and the agency, which I think it should be, it borderlines restricting people's free, individual freedoms, and potentially could be abused. So it's just another, I guess there's a couple of points. One would be that it's important that we have the right people in office and in government so that those authorities aren't abused, as we see in the last couple of years with the COVID restrictions. And, yeah.
Thank you. I'm not sure if there's a question. I don't think...
That was more of a comment, just I realized it is something we kind of have to pass here because it's coming down from the province, and, but I can't pass it without expressing my opinion on it first.
Thank you.
Yeah, Deputy Reeve Fedeau?
Yeah, just one more question. So in regards to the training, says agency shall meet at least once a year. That's going to be in a formal setting, almost like a, like something's going down, you guys would kind of go through a dry run with that?
Yeah, so through the Reeve to Counselor Fedeau. So what happens with the agency is we meet, you know, technically, as far as the province is concerned, we must meet once a year to meet the requirements of the local authority emergency management regulation. I suggest we're probably going to meet a little bit more than that, certainly at the onset, while we're building this, I guess, the foundation. So I would suggest to you that we'll probably have a couple of meetings with the agency, and more than likely a couple of meetings with the committee in our, in our first year, which would be 2023. Now there's really little point in getting, rushing meetings through at the end of the year. It's a busy time for, for council as well.
Yeah.
So we'd probably end up doing that in 2024. And that is a legal requirement. We do have to meet at least once per year, but I think moving forward, just at the onset, we would likely add that up a little bit, just to make sure everybody's understanding.
Ready for it, that's right, yeah.
Correct.
Awesome. Thanks very much.
Any other comments or discussion? I'll be looking for first reading then.
I'll come out with that motion then.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fedeau, for making a motion. That bylaw number 1809, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville, number 87, to establish an emergency advisory committee and regional emergency management agency to be given first reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Looking for a second reading? Yeah, thank you, Counselor Kraviev, for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw 1809 be given second reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie? I need someone to go to third. Yeah?
Do we, do we have to go do third right now? Isn't it kind of standard that we leave third reading for another day, or it seems that we've been kind of bumping that procedure all along here the last while, just going straight to third?
CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Given that this has got to go to the minister for ministerial order, and unless council is planning on not passing third reason, third reading, I would see no reason why, although it is normal practice to hold off third reading, this is, this has come to Committee of the Whole.
Yeah.
And it's now at the council, so it's had several views by council.
Thank you. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make the motion for third reading, please.
Going into third? Just to go into third?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fedeau, for making a motion. The council proceeds into third and final reading for bylaw number 189, 1809. I'll call for the vote. Carrie? Looking for third reading?
Sure, I'll make that.
Okay. Moved by, sorry, moved by Deputy Reeve Fedeau on behalf of council that bylaw number 1809 be given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
Just, just have a question. So when, when is your, your work going to start? I know you've been working on it for, for quite a while. So as far as, you know, your deep dive, is it going to be a four-month process, a six-month process for you?
Through the Reeve to Counselor Fedeau. So the next process for us is to, we were hoping to exercise, conduct a bit of an exercise this year. And then moving forward, we're going to be working on the actual plan. So appendix is within the plan on how to respond to certain events that are known. And then there's, there's a bit of a risk assessment and environmental. And what I mean environmental, I don't mean climate, I mean what's in our area, what kind of environment are we in, what's our standing timber, things like that, what's your flood patterns, things like that. So all that gets built into the plan, which you've already started to develop. And then the, I guess, the next, the next step after it's developed, and maybe during that development process, to actually exercise that plan and do a tabletop with it. Prior to that, we would like to form the committee and the agency and actually have a meeting, and, and then move forward. So there's, there's a bit of a, there's a bit of a process to it, but we're, we're fully engaged on it. We're moving forward quite rapidly. So there's, there's a bit of a, there's a bit of a process to it, but we're, we're fully engaged on it. We're moving forward quite rapidly. Now, this was sort of the main thing. Now that we've got the framework underway and we've got it stabilized that way, we can move forward with executing the development of the plan.
Awesome. Thanks for the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister, Mister Reeve, we just have one more motion to adopt the terms of references.
That's correct.
And approve the agreements.
I apologize. Looking for one more motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt the terms of references.
Okay, thank you Counselor Crick for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts emergency advisory committee terms of reference and emergency management agency terms of reference and presented. And furthermore, the council approves emergency management partnership agreement with the village of Glendon and the Borderlands Emergent Management Mutual Aid Agreement as presented. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. So on to planning and community services, nine point three point one. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning. So this morning I have bylaw number one eight oh four, which is the Ardmore Area Structure Plan bylaw. Administration has been working on a review and update of the Ardmore Area Structure Plan to ensure that the plan is consistent with the Municipal Government Act, current practices, municipal policies, and community aspirations. As all municipal ASPs are established through council bylaw, administration is proposing bylaw number eighteen oh four for second and subsequent third reading, which will repeal and replace the previous bylaw thirteen oh one, which was passed in two thousand and four. The review and update of the Ardmore ASP was initiated in March of twenty twenty-one with the assistance from the community consulting firm, Urban Systems. On June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, an in-person public engagement event was scheduled and completed. The amended Ardmore ASP reflects input from the community focused on the following themes. The first is strengthen the main street and look for opportunities to encourage more business opportunities. Second, to leverage and build on the community amenities and facilities. The third is to retain the small-town feel while remaining open to growth and development opportunities that create a mix of uses and housing to support the sustainability of the community. Fourth, to maintain a focused vision when considering new growth and development opportunities. First reading was approved by council on August twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-two. A public hearing was held on September fourteenth of twenty twenty-two, where parties present spoke to the proposed bylaw. The following changes have been made to the draft documents since first reading and as a result of the discussion from the public hearing. The first change was changing a small strip of lands on the west edge of the developed lots in the southeast of two sixty-two of four to reflect the current zoning of HR two on the existing land use map. So that can be found on page eight of the proposed ASP. The second was changing the future land use concept in figure seven, which can be found on page twenty of the ASP, of the lands west of Fifty-Second Street in the southeast of two sixty-two of four of the ASP. From reserved to for future development, it has now been changed to residential. So administration, administrative recommended action is that bylaw number eighteen oh four, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville to adopt the Ardmore Area Structure Plan, as amended, be given second reading and furthermore, third reading.
Thank you. Just like, yep, yes. Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Kravjak. I'm making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen oh four, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to adopt Ardmore Area Structure Plan as amended and to be given second reading. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Looking for another motion for third?
I'll move to go into third reading.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen oh four be given third reading. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie. Thank you. Onto nine three point two.
Bylaw number eighteen oh five is the Cherry Grove, Cherry Grove Area Structure Plan. Administration has been working on a review and update of the Cherry Grove Area Structure Plan to ensure the plan is consistent with the Municipal Government Act, current practices, municipal policies, and community aspirations. The review and update of the Cherry Grove ASP was initiated in March of twenty twenty-one, also with the assistance from the community consulting firm, Urban Systems. On July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, an in-person public engagement was scheduled and completed in Cherry Grove. The amended Cherry Grove ASP reflects input from the community focused on the following themes. One, maintain the rural and natural qualities of the community. Two, explore opportunities to accommodate businesses that support the growth of the community. Three, maintain housing options that provide opportunities for citizens to age in place. Four, continue to support the growth and expansion of community facilities that contribute to the sustainability of the hamlet. Five, leverage community facilities and natural areas to retain and build community events and activities. First reading was approved by council on August twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-two. A public hearing was held on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, where parties were present and spoke to the proposed bylaw. The following changes have been made to the draft document since first reading and the public hearing. The first change was removing the landfill or, and corresponding setbacks from figure five, development constraints map. It was our, we did believe that there was a landfill at one time. There was an approval done through Alberta, through AEP, but the landfill was never constructed, so there is no constraints from that area. And an addition of the general policies to section three point oh, which can be found on page nineteen of the proposed ASP, attached as appendix eight. These policies were a part of the document during the creation portion, but somehow got missed when revisions of the document were completed. These policies ensure higher order, order policy documents, as well as provincial regulations, are incorporated into the planning and development decisions. So administration is recommending that bylaw number eighteen oh five, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, to adopt the Cherry Grove Area Structure Plan, as amended, be given second reading, and furthermore, that it be given third reading.
Thank you.
Yeah, since I missed that presentation on the area structure plan for Cherry Grove, I'm going to recuse myself from the vote.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we're, we're taking her pretty slim here. Okay.
I'll make a motion to go to second reading. All right.
Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen oh five, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to adopt the Cherry Grove Area Structure Plan as amended, to be given second reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Looking for third reading? Okay, thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen oh five be given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much. Onto nine point three point three. Morning.
Good morning.
I think, yes.
Could we bring up appendix B, please? Good morning, council. So thank you for this opportunity. So today we're looking at the Aurora Borealis Estates Area Structure Plan. This covers the quarter section just north of the Bonneville Airport. And this bylaw, which is here for first reading, is to appeal the previous Aurora Borealis Estates Area Structure Plan bylaw, or bylaw number thirteen eighty-six, and to re-adopt it under bylaw eighteen eleven with some minor text changes. So these changes are to support the eventual subdivision of municipal land within the Bonneville Airport area and allow access to the airport and the area just north of that. So starting under section four point two. Thank you. Give me one second, sorry. So, starting under section four point two, you will see the text highlighted in red and crossed out. This text is to be removed. That limits the ability for access to the runway. This is being removed so that the municipal reserve, also referred to as the taxiway within the ASP, may be used by planes and other necessary vehicles to access the runway from the lands to the north. Scrolling down to five point four one. So here, again, the text in red and crossed out is to be removed, while text in green is to be added. So the text here limited the use of recreational area by prohibiting the movement of airplanes across the recreational designated areas. So you can see the wording in green is being added to allow the airplanes and necessary vehicles for, to operate. And subsection E, in its entirety, is being removed, which only allowed aircrafts access to these areas once a detailed recreational plan was approved. Scrolling down here to five point five, under section, or subsection A, sorry. We can see the municipal reserve was to be used for linear parks and pathways and were designated as recreational areas. This wording was changed to allow for roads to be placed on municipal reserve, as is allowed under the Municipal Government Act. And, and to allow for, or to limit the use of those roads to airplanes and vehicles necessary to the operation and maintenance of the Bonneville Airport. And subsection B was removed as the statement that limits the ability of the municipal district to take environmental reserve. In future cases, it may be that the area structure plan expands, or the area expands, or anything along those lines. And it's just a little bit of cleaning up here so that we still have the ability to take ER. And then finally, subsection B, just noted that all linear parks will be developed with pathways and minimum right-of-ways. This is, again, just to allow those areas that have been designated under the area structure plan to be used for roadways and not limited to only pathways and linear parks. And that's all the changes that would be occurring. All of the reports and figures that were attached to the area structure plan previously are being carried forward. This is just for these minor changes that I've highlighted here. So if you have any questions at this time, I would be happy to answer them.
Yes, Deputy Reeve Fede.
Yeah, I'm glad this is coming forward. It's kind of been, you know, a park that was kind of made for that, that it never could be that. So glad to see that. May this question either for yourself or the CEO, Hogan? So in regards to the storm water management plan, with the MRs going away, I'm sure that's all being looked at, and I'm sure we have a pretty good plan moving forward?
Sorry, if I may. So it, it's not that the MR is going away. The MR is still there and designated. It's just that we'd be allowed to use it for roads. And then the drainage through the MR would still be continued through the ditching alongside those roads, if implemented.
Is there going to be any kind of, I guess, like realignment of any roads there, or any plants, any drainage plants?
There's a possibility on the very south end, within the Bonneville Airport area, of a road being moved a few meters north and connecting to some of the roads within the Aurora Borealis Estates Area Structure Plan area. However, again, the plan would be to have the drainage follow along within the ditch of that road as it's adjusted.
Awesome. Good, thank you.
Just got a quick question. I thought when we first developed that, that was the idea of having hangers over there and the planes were going to taxi across. Do you remember that, Mike, or is that? Well, is there any hangers or anything out in that? There is? So we're not allowing those planes to come across anymore? Is that, sorry?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. We have been, because our airplanes on the other side, there was some, when, when I arrived on scene last year and I went through the Aurora Borealis Area Structure Plan, I noticed that there was some restrictions in the, in the area structure plan that actually did not allow for that, even though that, I think that was the original intent of council back in the day.
Yeah.
To allow that to happen. This is cleaning up those issues to now make it, to now make it allowable to use those areas that were considered recreation, which are actually the small taxiways that if that was ever to be developed, to allow aircraft to taxi to the airport area specifically.
Okay, just making sure that I know what I'm agreeing to here. Good. Thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen?
Looks good.
All right.
Yeah, I'll make the motion number one then, if you want.
Sure. Almost said Deputy Reeve here. He made enough motions today. So thank you, Counselor Crick, on making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen eleven, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to adopt Aurora Borella Estates Area Structure Plan to be given first reading. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Looking for another motion, please? Thank you, Counselor Skarson, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves December fourteenth, two thousand, two thousand twenty-two at ten AM as the date and time for the bylaw number eighteen eleven public hearing. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie?
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute break here, ten-minute break. Ronald McDonald hosts. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fede.
So today I want to present a request we received from the Ronald McDonald House charities. We've received a letter from them requesting sponsorship to assist with the costs for their upcoming twenty twenty-three Winterland Invitational Local Hockey Tournament and fundraising event scheduled for February seventeenth and nineteenth next year. RMHC provides lodging for families with seriously, serious ill or injured children who must travel to receive medical care. There are currently four houses in Alberta, in Calgary, Edmonton, Red Deer, and Medicine Hat. This specific request for sponsorship is in the amount of eight thousand dollars as an ICE sponsor for their twenty twenty-three Winterland Invitational. This under thirteen and under eleven hockey tournament brings approximately thirty-six teams and over five hundred families to Cold Lake, Bonneville, Glendon, and Elk Point during this time. The funds raised from this event are used to assist Lakeland area families with their stays at Ronald McDonald House. Other items of note, the MD has previously sponsored this event in twenty eighteen through to twenty twenty-one. In twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, the event was changed to a virtual fundraising event only due to pandemic restrictions. In twenty twenty-two, upon receipt of the annual sponsorship request, council directed administration to encourage them to apply for sponsorship through the newly created event and program sponsorship level of the Community Action Grant. No application for this event was submitted, however, an application was later submitted and consequently approved to this grant program for sponsorship of their annual golf tournament this summer. Attached for council's information is the request letter received from Ronald McDonald House. And reference to our strategic plan is, supporting this is in line with goal one, building a prosperous and sustainable community, and goal four, which is enhancing the livability of our community. the livability of our community. Cost and source of funding, eight thousand dollars to be funded from council's grants to individual and non-government organization, your twenty twenty-two budget. Since preparing this RFD two weeks ago, we have determined, due to limitations on how often you can apply to the Community Action Grant, the second option of directing them to apply again is not valid. So as far as the cost and source of funding, it would only be through, should council approve this, through the grants to individual and non-government entities. So administration's recommended action is actually number two, which is that council approves the request by Ronald McDonald House charities for funding support of the twenty twenty-three Winterland Invitational in the amount of eight thousand dollars to be funded from the twenty twenty-two operating budget.
Thank you, and good morning. I don't know if I say good morning, but good morning. Yeah, Counsel Crick?
So, the, the original recommendation was to direct them to apply for the five thousand through the Community Action Grant program, but if I'm understanding correctly, you're saying that it's because they already got a grant for that, for the golf tournament this year, they wouldn't be eligible for that?
That is correct.
So now, now we're recommending that we give them eight thousand just as a council gift kind of thing?
Through the reef? Yes, so the way that, with our new policies that are in place, if their request was two thousand dollars or less in sponsorship, we would process it through the sponsorship and donations policy, which is approved through the CAO. The second option, if they're requesting sponsorship up to five thousand dollars, would go through the Community Action Grant. We would support directing them to that, however, because they've already received that specific grant, I believe it was just over three thousand dollars for their golf tournament, they no longer, if they apply through it again, we would have to decline it because you can only apply once per year. So that is why administration is recommending, should we wish to continue to support this event specifically, it would need to be a council-directed motion and come from council's allocation in the twenty twenty-two budget.
Yes, Deputy Reeve?
So what is the total amount that we have given them so far versus to their first ask, what we usually do annually? And then the, their five thousand for the golf? Are we at thirty now?
Through the reef, I'm just pulling up that information. So I have access to our givings through the grant policies, which currently this year was only three thousand dollars. I don't have in front of me how much council approved, but there is an annual amount, I believe. Unfortunately, I can't remember that number off the top of my head.
Okay. But it's on around that twenty or twenty-five thousand, I believe.
I don't think it was that high.
What was, you're saying is an annual amount that we give them just to give them? I don't think that's.
For the, for the Star.
Oh, this is Stars now we're talking about?
So, and then these guys are.
Stars are not associated with these guys, right? Ronald McDonald?
That's what I'm getting confused of. Okay.
Yeah, these are two different. This is Ronald McDonald House, Stars is Stars, yeah. I don't think they're together.
Okay.
Yeah, Stars charges per person or whatever, right? Are we paid per person, a dollar or two dollars, or whatever it is?
Yeah.
Right?
Through the reef, as far as I'm aware, all requests for sponsorship were the ones that were noted in the RFD. So specifically to that, on top of our sponsorship requests, I don't have the information in front of me right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Just looking for a motion?
Sure. If they'll move option number two as recommended.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counsel Cravieak, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves the request by Ronald McDonald House charities for the funding support of the two thousand twenty-three Winterland Invitational in the amount of eight thousand to be funded by the two thousand twenty-two operating budget. Any discussion? Yes, Counsel Crick?
Yeah, I guess I just, we're trying to tighten up the budget around here, and if we're just approving eight thousand dollars, is that in the budget already, the operating budget? Like, coming from the operating budget? I'm not really seeing like a line item where that fits in, or?
Through the reef, council at the beginning of the twenty, as part of the twenty twenty-two budget, had allocated, I believe it was two hundred thousand dollars, associated with council givings for the year at council's discretion as requests come through to you. Right now, currently, I don't, the last time I looked at the balance, it was around, still remaining this year, around fifty thousand dollars approximately. So there is money in the budget for, for this.
Yeah, I don't think they'd be asking for it if they never had it in the budget, especially if they're saying they're taking it out of the budget here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Nine point three point five.
Administration has received a letter from the Bonneville Senior double-A Hockey Club to announce, sorry, the Bonneville Pontiac Society Senior double-A Hockey Club to announce their seventieth year span as a hockey club in Bonneville. The first game played by the senior A double-A team was on December sixteenth, nineteen fifty-two. To commemorate this important milestone for the Bonneville Senior Pontiacs, they are requesting two items from the MD of Bonneville. One is to provide advertising sponsorship funding in the amount of two thousand dollars, as well as attendance by the Reeve and council as guests of the Pontiacs at the commemorative hockey game event to be held on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-two against the Devon Barons at the Bonneville Centennial Center. The Bonneville Senior Pontiacs Hockey Club is a member of the North Central Alberta Hockey League, along with Devon, La Combe, Fort Saskatchewan, Red Deer, Morneville, Westlock, and Camrose. Items of note for this request, previous funding provided to the seniors Pontiacs include four hundred dollars in twenty fifteen for hosting provincials, and five hundred dollars in twenty eighteen for their alumni night event sponsorship. Attached for council's information is a copy of the letter and sponsorship information provided by the Bonneville Senior double-A Pontiacs. Reference to our strategic plan is that is in line with goal three of promoting community development. Regarding cost and source of funding, the cost of two thousand dollars, which includes a full-page ad in their program, which is distributed free to fans at every home game, as well as four season ticket packs. The source of funding for this request would be through the donations and sponsorship policy, as it is two thousand dollars, as it meets the policy's requirements. Administration's recommended action is that council approves the request from the Bonneville Senior double-A Pontiacs for a sponsorship in the amount of two thousand dollars to be funded from and through policy number two A zero zero three, donations sponsorship and recognition's policy as part of the twenty twenty-two operating budget. And furthermore, that council approves attendance by members of council to the Bonneville Senior double-A Pontiac seventieth anniversary commemorative hockey game to be held on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at the Bonneville and District Centennial Center.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion?
Okay. Mr. Eve, make a motion for option number one.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Cravieak, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves the request from the Bonneville Senior double-A Pontiacs for sponsorship in the amount of two thousand to be funded from, through policy number two A zero zero three, donation sponsorships and recognition policy as part of the two thousand twenty-two operating budget. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. Looking for another motion?
I'm going to make the motion with the Reeve attends their charity game there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Skarson, on behalf of council that council approves attending, attendance by members of council to the Bonneville Senior A double-A Pontiac seventieth anniversary commemorative hockey game to be held on December sixteen, two thousand twenty-two at the Bonneville and District Centennial Center. Any discussion? Yes, Deputy Reeve Fadav?
So we're looking for, for some people right now, because there's four tickets? Or are we going to do that later on?
If council's comfortable delegating that right now, that would be great. If, if not, we understand there's also two counselors absent, so if it'd be easier to do that after and confirm with either of them if they would like to attend, is that your discretion?
I think it's two separate events, right? I mean, the council come to the game and then the four season tickets is for each game.
Yeah, the, the tickets is for all games, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that can be given to staff or anybody, yeah. Correct? Correct me if I'm wrong?
That's correct.
Okay, and this is just, just to come to one special game, the seventieth, correct?
And the, and the Reeve to say a few words.
Okay. All right, I don't see that in that motion anywhere.
Oh, it's there.
Yes, I can, sure.
To the Ellen, to the deputy?
Yes, or to, well, Counselor Skarson, I think he could. Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Nine point three point six. Thank you, Esther. Morning, Moan.
Morning, Mr. Even, counsel. So this is the municipal stimulus program grant change update. So in September of twenty twenty, the MD of Bonneville applied for and was successfully awarded the municipal stimulus program MSP grant for the revitalization of the Cold Lake MD Campground Boat Launch and Mooring System. Work was to be completed no later than December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. However, following the design and engineering phase of the project, the project has since been delayed due to regulatory approvals and First Nations consultation. As such, an extension was granted by the minister to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. To date, regulatory approvals and First Nations consultation are still being processed and have not been finalized or approved. Should this process be finalized and approved, the construction window is now anticipated to be mid to late twenty twenty-three. This anticipated timeline will not meet the grant project completion deadline of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, whereafter any unused grant monies are to be returned to the province. An additional extension was requested, though this was denied. During this request, it was asked if this grant could be utilized towards the green chairlift replacement. The province confirmed that the green chairlift replacement is an eligible project. So to ensure that the grant funds are fully utilized, administration recommends swapping the NSP grant funds with the equivalent funds allocated already for the green chairlift replacement project, as this is slated to be completed before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. This would fall within strategic plan of goal three to promote community development. The cost and source is just a swap, it's a reciprocal transfer between funding sources, and our recommendation is that council accepts the update of, on the municipal stimulus program grant regarding the funds being utilized for the green chairlift replacement project instead of the Cold Lake MD Campground Boat Launch and Mooring System project as information.
Thank you. Yes, Deputy Reeve?
So from what I understand, it's, so the same, I guess, the same ministry is, that could approve it, is also denying it. It kind of sounds weird, but I'm just trying to, last night I was reading and I'm like, okay, so they, they could approve it, because I think due diligence has been done. It's been going on for two years now. And, yeah, so there's no end to sight in regards to any of the consultations that you know of?
Through the reef, we actually have, just finalizing a letter highlighting all the points from the consultation, and then that would be submitted to the province, and then after that, they may give us approval, and then following then that approval, then the remaining regulatory approvals would be processed. So it is, it is close, but the construction wouldn't, we, for this grant, it wouldn't be done in time, so we wouldn't meet the criteria.
Makes total sense, might as well use the money, so I'll make the motion for option number one then.
All right, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fadav, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the update on municipal stimulus program grant regarding the funds being utilized for the green chairlift replacement project instead of the Cold Lake MD Campground Boat Launch and Mooring System project as information. Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Skarson?
So that, will that mean that, will you be allocating the money that was used for the green chairlift over to the Cold Lake? Is that right then?
That's correct. It's, it's just a simple funding source swap, so.
So does that get to be in the motion then, or?
We're, aren't we just adding to the green chair? We're not swapping money, are we?
Mr. Even, members of council, yeah, the, it's, funding of capital projects is solely the purview of sitting council. So all this, the request is, is to take the MSP money that we were about to lose at the end of December, move it to the green chair, and then use the, the same money that we would have used for the green chair, that we could hang on to that and use that later, early into the new year on, on the, on the, on the.
So we're just swapping the same funds?
Yeah, through the reef, it's, it's simply so we don't have to send that money back. It's.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just saying, do you have to have that in motion that you're using the green chairlift money to do the mooring system?
I, I think it's just to receive this information, that that's what we're going to proceed with.
I just didn't know if you'd be coming back for money to, for the campgrounds. Right?
Okay, any other? Yes, counselor? No, we're good. All right, then I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Onto nine point three point seven.
So this is for the Kinnisou equipment purchase. So through the twenty twenty-two capital budget, council has already approved the purchase of a replacement snow groomer and compact tractor for use at Kinnisou Ridge. A request for proposal was posted for the snow groomer with two proposals being submitted. After reviewing and evaluating the proposals, it was determined the groomer that met the requirements of the RFP and Kinnisou operations, as well as being the lowest price, was Piston Bully at three hundred thousand, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and nine dollars with a trade-in. A request for pricing were also put out for the replacement of a compact tractor to three local dealers. Upon reviewing the quotes, only one falls within budget and still meets the needs of the Kinnisou operations. The dealer is also willing to hold their price, as quoted, for a Massey Ferguson compact tractor for the limited time. The proposals received for both pieces of equipment were as follows for the snow groomer, the Piston Bully again is three hundred and sixty-six thousand, and Print Off was the other groomer at four hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and fifty. For the compact tractors, the Massey Ferguson came in at, at our budget limit to sixty thousand, John Deere was at seventy thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight, and Coyote was at sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. This is included in the approved capital budgets, and administration is recommending that council approves the purchase of a Piston Bully snow groomer from Oak Creek Golf and Turf, Inc., in the amount of three hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and nine dollars after trade-in, to be funded from the twenty twenty-two capital budget, and that council approves the purchase of a Massey Ferguson compact tractor from Coet and Sons Implants Limited in the amount of sixty thousand to be funded from the twenty twenty-two capital budget.
Thank you. Looking on the motion number one?
Yeah, I'll make the motion for number one.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Skarson, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves the purchase of a Piston Bully snow groomer from Oak Creek Golf and Turf Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and nine after trade-in to be funded by the two thousand twenty-two capital budget. after trade-in to be funded by the two thousand twenty-two capital budget. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Deputy Reeve?
Yeah, I'm glad it's called Piston Bully, not Piston Broke.
Yeah, there's an old joke like that, yeah. Um, I, are they gonna, one, one, is there a supply time to any of these? Like, they have to produce a, a machine by a certain time?
Uh, yes, through the Reeve, so, uh, they have said that they would be able to deliver this, uh, before the end of the year. Um, both manufacturers were able to give us those kind of timelines, so.
Okay, so we had those on the, in the package, they have to deliver by a certain time?
Yeah, we had been in discussion with them, um, throughout the year, and, so they kinda had, um, an idea that we may be interested, so, um, it worked out well that they weren't sold out, because, yeah, the, the lead time is, um, a year to eighteen months, uh, if they hadn't have done that, so it's kinda, kinda nice, both of them.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and Council.
We have one more, I think? One wanna make another motion for the tractor? Or did we read them all at once?
Yeah, it was two together.
It was two together? Okay.
Uh, Mr. Reeve, my apologies, that was not clear, the, the vote we, we put through was only for the snow groomer.
There's still one?
I apologize, um, the, the vote that we cast was only for the snow groomer.
Yeah, and we're going with the tractor now, correct? Correct?
Yes.
But option one said to include both, right? But we didn't do that?
Um, yeah, sorry, for the miscommunication, the recommended action had two separate motions on it, um, so we broke them out ourselves as well, we weren't, we didn't, we misunderstood on our end, so we only did the one vote, the one.
So you're looking for another motion?
Okay, Mr. Reeve, the other motion.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Cravieak for making a motion on behalf of council, that council approves the purchase of a Massey Ferguson compact tractor from Coette and Sons Implement, Limited, in the amount of s- sixty thousand dollars to be funded by the two thousand twenty-two capital budget. Any discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, yeah, I'm sorry for the confusion, everybody. Um, I guess we're on to nine point four. Nine point four, one.
Um, good morning.
Morning.
This is, uh, Bylaw eighteen oh eight, Amending Boards and Committees Bylaw. Administration is proposing amendments to Bylaw seventeen forty-eight, establishing boards and committees in the M.D. of Bonneville to replace the previous terms of reference for the Committee of the Whole, as well as address advertising requirements for open member-at-large positions and term conditions for those member-at-large appointments. Bylaw seventeen forty-eight was passed in February of two thousand two, and administration had previously received direction from council to amend municipal legislation as required to establish a requirement to advertise all open at member, member-at-large positions, as well as clarify the term conditions for member-at-large appointments. So the proposed amendments that were brought forward, um, are the addition of subsection seven point seven, indicating the requirement to advertise open positions even if the current member is eligible and interested for reappointment. The addition under subsection eight point seven, establishing a maximum term appointment of four years unless otherwise provided for in the terms of reference for that board or committee, and then also replacing the current Committee of the Whole terms of reference with the revised version which was adopted by council back in May. The Committee of the Whole reviewed this amending bylaw on September twenty-first, and are recommending that council give pass the bylaw as presented. Attached for council's review is, uh, Bylaw number eighteen oh eight, the amending bylaw as Appendix A, and the original bylaw seventeen forty-eight as Appendix B. Our recommended action is that the bylaw receive all three readings today, only to have it in place in time for the organizational meeting at the end of the month.
Okay, thank you. Looking for first reading then?
Yeah, I'll do first reading.
All right, thank you, Councillor Crick for making a motion on behalf of council, that bylaw number eighteen oh eight being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven to amend bylaw number seventeen forty-eight, establishing the boards and committees for the municipality to be given first reading. Any discussion? Oh, yes, go ahead.
It says the quorum is five members, why five, not four?
For Committee of the Whole?
Yeah.
Um, that was what was discussed and decided upon at that time. If you would like to make an amendment, we can bring back the terms of reference.
I'm just wondering, I don't remember, I don't recall that, but, do you guys want to leave it at five, or?
It's because if it's, if there's anything less than five, it's Committee of the Part.
Well, you're voting, right? Three to two, or two, two? It has to be five, huh, doesn't it?
Uh, no, fifty percent plus one, so four would be core, like, for, for regular meetings of council, uh, quorum is four.
Right.
Um, but it's always been five, that's not a change we made in this, in that recent update to the terms of reference, so if council wishes to make that change, we can definitely take, do that.
See, Mr. Reeve, it's like council, if you have four members in council, you have quorum.
Yes.
So why would the Committee of the Whole have five? That's my question.
That's a good question.
Um, yeah, I, I can't speak to that.
I think we should.
Councillor Crick?
Yeah, I think we should leave it at five, and I guess the Committee of the Whole are kinda trying to discuss stuff in depth, and if we only have part of council here, like, four out of the seven, then we're not gonna get that in-depth discussion that we should have otherwise.
Well, what, what council you have four, you have, you have quorum. So, Mr. CEO, what's, uh, what's your thoughts?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council, to, uh, Councillor Cravieak, I guess we didn't change that, that was a carryover from, uh, from older bylaw. Uh, I would suggest that, uh, that quorum be the same for either Committee of the Whole and for council, so either council moves to five, or Committee of the Whole moves to four. I think we have an inconsistency which I think will probably cause confusion one day as to we have quorum or not, because, uh, here today it would be four, but Committee of the Whole would be five, so I would suggest, uh, and I, I think there's an argument to be made either way, whether it's five or four, I would just suggest consistency between the two.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, like, today we were pretty close not to being there, so, if, but we, this is a regular meeting, but, but if it had been a different meeting, we wouldn't have had it.
Yeah, but you still could, would have had four people, if one more was absent, you still would have been okay.
Yeah.
So I'll make a, I'd like to make an amendment to say quorum of the committee is, uh, four members. I somehow missed that last time, I didn't somehow, so, and then make a motion to, uh, approve this, uh, with the, uh,
Amendment.
Amendment of four members.
Um, Mr. Reeve, if I may, because the terms of reference are adopted separate from the passing of the bylaw, um, what we can do is either pass it now as is and bring back a new terms of reference in the next month or so with that change, and then have it reincorporated into the bylaw once council has approved it, or, um, we can not, um, we can amend this bylaw by removing the, the revised terms of reference with the amendment altogether. Okay, yeah, um, we could also table it.
I think that'd be the easiest, is just to table it.
The, the, um, the preference was to have this in place for the organizational meeting, but it's not, it's not mandatory, it won't negatively impact any of the appointments for, for this upcoming organizational.
Yeah, well, maybe let's just pass it then, and, as is, and then we can, she can, they can bring it back later, and then we'll change that to make it, make it four and both. How do you guys, it's a good idea? All right, we'll just, we'll, we'll stay the status quo then. Okay, we have a, we have a motion on the table, any other discussion? That was a good discussion though, thanks for bringing that up, Councillor Cravieak. Uh, seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
So, uh, Mr. Reeve, you bring that back, uh, next month, or, or when?
I can bring in amended terms of reference to the next meeting for council's consideration for sure.
Carrie? Looking for second reading? Yep, Councillor Cravieak? Thank you, Councillor Cravieak, for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen oh eight be given second reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. Looking to go to third, permission to go to third? Yeah, Deputy Reeve Fideev? Thank you, Deputy Fideev, that council proceeds to the third and final reading for bylaw number eighteen oh eight. I'll call for the vote. Looking for a third and final reading? Okay, Councillor Skarson? Thank you, Councillor Skarson, for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen oh eight be given, given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Nine point four point two?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council, uh, this is regarding the Chief-Elected Official Title Review. Administration has prepared a report for council's consideration, consideration regarding the title of the Municipal District of Bonneville's Chief-Elected Official, which is currently established as Reeve. Section one fifty-five of the MGA allows the municipality to give their CEO a different title appropriate to the office used. The Committee, uh, the Committee of the Whole reviewed this report on September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and tabled the discussion to the October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting of council. The M.D.'s CEO has always, always had the title of Reeve going back to the first set of meeting minutes back in nineteen fifty-five. However, administration not able to locate any historical documentation specifying the designation of the Reeve. Of the sixty-nine rural municipalities throughout the province, fifty-seven use the title of Reeve, while the remaining twelve use the title of his or her worship and the mayor. The primary difference in the use of either title is the method of appointment for the Chief-Elected Official. Most municipalities that use the title of mayor appoint the CEO directly through the general election, whereas most municipalities that use the title of Reeve go through the process of council-electing one of the councillors to act as the CEO for a specific term, typically a year, at the annual organizational meeting. Since the M.D. of Bonneville's CEO is elected directly through the general election, administration proposing to change the title from Reeve to mayor to align our customs with the common practice. If direction was given to proceed with this change, a council resolution would confirm the change, and new title would be specified within the M.D. procedural bylaw through an amendment. Um, there are, a minimal costs associated with this, we're estimating under five hundred dollars, it's essentially business cards and, and a few print material, and our recommended action is that council approves change in the title for the Chief-Elected Official for the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, from me, from Reeve to mayor, and effective, uh, at council's discretion.
Thank you. Any discussion or motion? Yeah, Deputy Reeve Fideev?
Yeah, I, I'd like to change, it's a positive, uh, move going forward, uh, it's more recognizable in the grander scheme of things, uh, we also heard that, you know, people are looking for, uh, you know, who the Reeve was in the past, and they didn't know who that was, and, you know, you thought you were the mayor. Uh, I think it's, especially for, for economic development, it's pretty good. Uh, right now, we're seeing there is, uh, all the elected, general election, uh, general elected are mayors, and there's twelve, and then there's four, including us, that are, that are still Reeve, and I think it's a positive move going forward.
Thank you, yeah.
But, uh, Mr. Reeve, uh, to Councillor Fideev, some of those who are mayor are hamlets, like Laklebish, for example, are rural and urban combined, so it's not just, uh, rural. Strathcona County as well, they have the rural and urban combined, so that, have a mayor, so, yeah.
Yeah, and then, I mean, uh, you know, there's other ones like Yellowhead, that's not, uh, you're also looking at Rocky View, that's not, Le Duke, that's not, so there's a lot of ones as well, so, but I, yeah.
Councillor Crick, or Councillor Skarson?
Well, I, I, I don't, um, you know, I prefer Reeve, probably, uh, I could get behind mayor, I just, I'm curious as to how many times I would have to listen to someone call you his worship, though? Is that like an official title that goes along with mayor, or?
It's a good question, actually.
Is that a question for our?
Yeah, that's for, uh, Mr. Hogan, for sure, he might know best.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve and members of council, so the title his or her worship is, uh, is just an honorary, uh, title given to, to mayors. Uh, you may see some people attending, uh, uh, cities or, or towns with the mayor that , uh, sometimes from the podium, they would be addressed as, uh, your worship. Uh, it's just an honorary title, um, it, it's, uh, um, if, if it's a cause of concern, we certainly could eliminate it from our vernacular, but it, it's just a customary term, uh, used for, uh, for somebody holding the mayor's title.
So, Mr. Reeve, uh, the Reeve cannot be called his worship? I've heard a Reeve being called his worship?
Uh, thank you, uh, through the Reeve, Councillor Cravieak, I've never heard of it, um, I've, I'm not aware of any municipalities that use that term, uh, I'm specifically, uh, um, with the Reeve, I've, I've heard it used many times with, with the mayor, but not with the Reeve, um, I suppose it is possible, uh, they are essentially the same position, so any, uh, any, uh, any customary, uh, titles that would go with the, the position, um, I think it makes some sense that a Reeve could also be called his or her worship, but it, it's, it's not common practice.
So I just, I guess I'm curious, uh, Mr. Hogan, as to what you would direct your staff to refer to, uh, the mayor as?
Uh, given that it's a, um, through the chair to Councillor Skarson, given that it's a title that's, that's customary with, with the, um, uh, with the position, it would not bother me if, if, uh, staff, uh, at the podium, um, uh, designated it as his worship, uh, um, or, Mr. Mayor, uh, I, I, wouldn't matter to me either way, I think the, uh, I think the, um, I think the key is, is that particularly as we move into economic development, that there are, there is much confusion in the business world as to what a Reeve is, but everybody knows what a mayor is. So if we were to go to an economic development forum, or, or, uh, Reeve Kalinsky were to go to a trade show or symposium and was introducing himself as Mayor Kalinsky, I think many in the business community automatically understand what that is, many don't understand what it would be if it was Reeve. Uh, I will say that that's better than what it is on the East Coast where it's Warden, um, but, uh, uh, but, uh, I, I just think there are, there are some significant advantages, particularly as we move into, potentially into rebranding next year, and of course, as we, as we start getting fairly aggressive in our economic development, that, uh, a modernized title for the Chief-Elected Official is probably, um, is, is probably a worthwhile discussion.
Yeah, but, Mr., go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Councillor Skarson, then Councillor Cravieak?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, um, like I said, I can get behind mayor, I think it might go along better with a, a complete rebrand, if that's the direction we're gonna go, um, but I'll just be honest, if I would just, it would just seem strange hearing his worship in here over and over and over, so, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, well, if we do change to mayor, I don't expect anybody to call me worship, uh, whatsoever. Mayor Kalinsky would be fine, if that's the way we go, worship is, that's not, nobody's, needs to worship me as a, a mayor. Uh, I, I guess, uh, you know, that's the way they say it sometimes, but I won't expect anybody to be calling me worship, uh, ever.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, maybe your wife might wanna, uh, call you, your worship.
Yeah, I don't know about that either.
I don't know, there are, Mr. Reeve, uh, fifty-seven, uh, M.D.s and counties that have Reeves, so, uh, I'm not sure, I like the title of Reeve, but that's, I can go either way, I guess, uh, I don't know, I don't know what I'm gonna do.
It, it's a tough decision to make, and, uh, I know we, we don't have two guys here again today, so it's, uh, that's a tough thing. Yes, go ahead.
I know you had, you know, some conversations with, uh, Councillor Slipcheck in regards to that.
Yes.
Was it positive, uh, for that, or not?
Uh, he had the same comment as, uh, Councillor Skarson, uh, I don't think I talked to Dana about it, but he said if we're planning to rebrand eventually, he would like to see us go into mayor as well. I know, just on a note, that I was to two main conferences, and the, the one, you know, everybody know, knows what a Reeve is, but when you're, when you went to the conference in Regina, nobody knows what a Reeve is, they, they really don't. And then you get associated with, uh, uh, in a, in a setting like that, you get associated, associated with the town more than you do with your own M.D., uh, at that, you know, everybody thought we were part of the town, and that, it was, there was confusion there, but, uh, you know, but when you're at a, you know, when you're at our- But when you're at a, you know, when you're at our RMA, everybody knows what a Reeve is, right? There's no confusion there.
Well, deep thoughts. Let's go with, I'd like to make a motion that we, option number one. And this is effective, I don't know, it's beginning of the year. Organizational meeting? Sure.
You guys wanna add, you wanna add that to your?
And Mr. Reeve, members of council, I would add that Mayor Gondek, the city of Calgary, not very long ago, just after the election of last year, she did make a request that she was not addressed as your worship. So now addressing Mayor Gondek, the city of Calgary, is just Mayor Gondek.
Nice.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor. Any, sorry, we're just?
I guess I can go either way on this. Mayor Reeve? I'm not sure if I support the, it's a bigger expense. We decided to go with complete rebranding that's been mentioned here. I'm not sure if I think that's necessary. But what is your personal thought on, would you, do you want it to be mayor or Reeve, or?
You know, I thought about it quite a bit, and to me, if I stay Reeve, I'll be happy. If I become a mayor, I'll, it'll be no, it's just a, it's just a title. But the worship part, I definitely do not want to be called worship because I don't have that. I'm not, I don't think anybody should be called worship. I guess it's like, like Mr. Hogan said, it's just what it's been over the years, but I'm not that, I'm not that up there to be called worship. I called the mayor of Cold Lake Worship this morning, and he, over the phone, and he's like, no, it's just Mr. Copeland or Greg. So he, I think he has a problem with it. But I'm sure in a setting, if someone, you know, they start the meeting off, and you're somewhere, and they, you know, it's just a sign of respect, I guess, or, you know, I don't know. But nobody here has to, if it does change to mayor, I do not want the title as worship or anything. Mr. Mayor, that's about it.
Yes, Counselor Scarsen?
Yeah, so I just, you know, I think that a rebrand, and it's part of our strategy, I guess, but I would definitely like to hear what that looks like, 'cause there is a lot of confusion with us in the town of Bonneville, for sure. I know that, you know, outside of these borders. So I definitely, I'm like, and I think that that'd be the more appropriate time to kind of change everything over to mayor as well. So I just, I think it'd just be easier or cleaner that way, but like I said, we'll see how the vote goes, so.
Yeah, I'm all for rebranding as well. I just, you know, we do get confused with the town of Bonneville. Not that that's a bad thing, but when you're in a thing, it, you know, it's very confusing for other people. And then to be called the municipal district of Bonneville, it confuses, like even all the people, like we have ID three four nine, it's bigger. We have the people to the east, west, north, south. Then it'll be, hey, I'm from this one area, it has nothing to do with any town or city or village, and I think we're what we are, and that's, I think that's the way we should go. And we talked about this years ago, and I know my Reeve at the time, he always wanted to become mayor for this reason. He talked about it many times. Yeah. Because he went to a lot of events, and the more events you go to, you realize that it's probably the better way to go, but, you know, I'll, whatever council decides, that's the way I'll go. I'll be happy, happy to be a mayor, and I'm happy to be the Reeve. It's just a title at the end of the day.
Any other discussion? All right, we, I don't think we have the motion yet. Thank you Deputy Reeve Fideev for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves changing the title of chief elected official for the municipal district of Bonneville from Reeve to mayor effective on October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two. Any other final thoughts? I just wish the other two guys are here, but they're not. Okay, I'll call for the vote. This motion is defeated. Onto nine point four point three.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This is regarding the Toma Consulting Indigenous Protected and Conservation Area IPCA presentation of several weeks ago. Mr. Darrell Toma with Toma Consulting and Carrie Celine with Solstice Environmental Management attended the September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting of council virtually to present council with information regarding an engagement project for a new Indigenous Protected and Conservation Area IPCA in northeast Alberta, specifically in the Wolf Lake country. Presentation led by Toma Consulting was missing many details on how the potential creation of this IPCA around Wolf Lake would impact the MD of Bonneville. Questions still remain regarding control of assessment, control of land use planning, and other matters relating to MD autonomy. Future use of the land in question by residents is also a matter of concern. Reeve Kalinsky and myself met with MLA Hanson October ninth to confirm provincial involvement in the IPCA and to express the MD's concern. I'll let the Reeve speak to council regarding that meeting. Our recommended action is that council opposes the development of the new Indigenous Protected and Conservation Area IPCA until such time as clarity is provided regarding assessment control, land use planning, the MD of Bonneville's autonomy on lands inside the municipality's jurisdictional boundaries, and continued future resident use of the lands in question. And furthermore, that council would direct administration to prepare a draft letter to the Alberta premier, the minister of environment and parks, the minister of municipal affairs, the minister, and the minister of indigenous relations. That letter to come from the Reeve outlining the municipality's concerns regarding the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Yes, Counselor Crick?
Yeah, I think it's very, very important that we oppose this for the time being, until there's clarity like our CEO just outlined, and I'll make motion number one as he read it there.
Okay, thank you Counselor Crick for making a motion on behalf of council. That council opposes the development of the new Indigenous Protected, protected, sorry, my screen went down, Protected and Conservation Area IPCA until such time as clarity is provided regarding assessment control, land use, planning control, the MD of Bonneville's autonomy on lands inside the municipality's jurisdictional boundaries, and continue further resident use of the lands in question. And furthermore, that council directs administration to prepare a draft letter to the Alberta premier, the minister of environment and parks, the minister of municipal affairs, and the minister of indigenous relationships, from the Reeve outlining the municipality's concerns regarding the matter. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Deputy Reeve Fideev?
Yeah, there's also a few, you know, a few of the stakeholders that were not engaged on it. So just, yeah, this, it's very confusing, and some clearer direction will be good, so I just thought I'd mention that.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, there's also not enough information to support this at this time, so I'm not going to, I'm going to support the number one myself.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie. Thank you. Nine point five.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This is regarding a, an invitation. The Cold Lake Snowmobile Club Sleds and Threads Event, November twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. The Cold Lake Snowmobile Club is hosting a sleds and thread event, which consists of cocktails, a primary dinner, and auction and dance at the Cold Lake AgriPacks, starting at six PM on November twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. The Cold Lake Snowmobile Club is a nonprofit volunteer organization, which operates within the MD of Bonneville and the city of Cold Lake, and they maintain various trail systems, equipment, and a building, which provide groomed trail system and facility for snowbuilders in the area. Tickets are seventy-five each or six hundred for a table of eight. Administration's recommended actions, that council approved attendance to the Cold Lake Snowmobile Club Sleds and Threads Event on November twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, and to be attended by persons of council's discretion, at a cost to be determined, depending on who's going. And that's funded from the two thousand twenty-two operating budget.
That's just for information, or do we need a, we need a motion? There it is. Yeah, Deputy Reeve Fideev?
Yeah, it's a good fundraiser. We've gone every year, and I think the last time, we just got two tickets, and that was really it, so. But yeah, it's good networking, you know, we work on the same trails. We supported them with a groomer as well in the past, so it's a, it's a good group.
All right, would you like to make the motion?
I could. Let's.
This is number one?
Let's do that.
I don't, it doesn't come up on my screen here for some reason.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
For this motion, we would like clarity as to who would be attending, if possible.
Correct. You want a number, like of bodies? Doesn't mean who.
Preferably names, just so that the tickets can be distributed as soon as they come in, if possible, but at least a number.
Is there any of the staff that wanna attend after council says whoever wants to go? Yes, Deputy Reeve?
I'll go to my backyard. I'll take, I'll take two tickets, and then whoever wants to join me. Yeah. No, just for two people. I don't think we'll go as a table. I don't think, we have, we haven't in the past, and I think just for two tickets would be the way to go.
Anybody else here like to attend? Okay, let's, for two tickets, then, put that in, and Deputy Reeve Fideev and his wife, or? Or his son, or daughter, or somebody? Good friend?
Counselor Crick.
Counselor Crick? Would you like to go? We can change it to four. All right, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fideev, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approved attending the Cold Lake Snowmobile Club Sleds and Threads Event on November twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, to be held, to be attended by Counselor Fideev at the cost of a hundred and fifty, to be funded by the two thousand twenty-two operating budget. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Onto ten, ten point one, or?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Is the list of correspondence received? I'd like to point out particularly the letter from the Iron River School. Reeve Kalinsky, Counselor Slipchuck, Counselor Kreviak, and Counselor Swagert, myself attended the Iron River Playground Grand Opening. They have quite the, they have quite the apparatus there for the kids to play on, and they have sent us a letter thanking us for our participation in that, in that endeavor.
Thank you. All right, I'll look, I'm looking for a motion, motion to approve all this. Yes, Counselor Scarsen, you want any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question on the letter from the BRFA. So is that, they're asking for a letter back on Friday? Is that, is that right?
Reeve and council, this was an odd situation. We received a letter from Chair Kalinsky of the BRFA, who also is the Reeve, and asking me for clarity on a motion that was passed by council. So I have drafted a letter for the Deputy Reeve signature, because I don't write letters to elected officials, I write letters to administrators. And so usually, a letter to an elected official is signed by another elected official.
Yeah. All right. Was that on our outgoing correspondence? I didn't notice that.
The letter hasn't been signed yet. It's, I think it's waiting the Deputy Reeve signature, and then a copy will get sent to council. It's just, it's just indicating basically what the council motion was. We'll get that sent out to rest of council right away. It was an odd situation, and Reeve and I have spoken about it.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay. Who would like to make a motion? Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry, I'm just curious on this, again, so there's three council members that sit on the BFA board?
Yes.
And you still need a clarity on a motion that we made?
Yes.
All right. All right, well, whatever, I'll make the motion to accept this information, I guess.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Scarsen, for making a motion on behalf of council. That council accept the following correspondence of information. From one to nine. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie. Council reports. Yeah, Deputy Reeve?
I'll start. September thirtieth, we had a flag raising event at the city of Cold Lake, and then also came out here for the truth and reconciliation event that they held in Bonneville that evening. Kurt Kudila, a little, little speech there, and it was great. It was a great event. Yeah, it was really enlightening, and the entertainment was really good. And again, there was a lot of good conversation there.
Well, not much since the last meeting, because I think that I gave the CT report last time, and we haven't met with the library in a while, but I think we're getting close to hiring a new manager there as well, so that will be something. And then I guess the other thing is the Bonneville Chamber of Commerce Business of the Year Awards is on Friday this week, right? So just a reminder.
At FCSS meeting on, on the Thursday, the twenty-ninth, and I guess David Beal, the director, he's been there for forty years, he's retiring effective December ninth, so I guess we could be a new director in Bonneville, the FCSS. And then last night, I attended the BFA open house here in town. It was very well attended. I got there a little bit later than, it started at four to eight, and I got there around six, so a lot of people had already come through, but I just think they had around a thousand people come through there, so it's a good turnout.
Right here?
Sure.
Okay, also had a lodge meeting. There are thirty-seven vacant rooms in the Bonney Lodge and Cold Lake combined. Thanks for the letters from all councils requesting demolition of the old lodge in Cold Lake. Not sure when that's going to happen. And Minister Pahn made a comment that she wants to sell most of the affordable housing units over the next ten years, either transfer ownership to another operator. She said it's not privatization, but we have to wait for more details to happen, especially after a new premier has been sworn in. Yeah, I also attended the Iron River School Grand Opening. They have a very nice, closely knit group of volunteers there in Iron River, my old stomping grounds. And I attended the pre-budget council workshop, as you guys did, and I was there for the Bonneville Fire Prevention Open House. I was there before four, and I left a little before five, so I missed you, Counselor Crick. And that's all for me, thank you.
Yes, Deputy.
So, congrats to Mrs. Pahn's or Minister Pahn's comments there, so they don't want to privatize it, but they want to sell it off to a non-government agency?
I know, it's sort of, you know, there's no more details, so whenever there's more details, I'll let you guys know. So with a new premier, who knows what will happen with those things, yeah.
Thank you.
And me. Mr. Hogan and myself attended the Bonneville Regional High School, the new opening of the new building. I didn't get a tour or anything, but I got to see the new gym, and then we had the grand opening in there. All the kids were in there, it was very well attended and very well done. I was very impressed by the young lady. I think she's a grade twelve student. I can't remember her name, but they let her speak first, and then she got awarded the plaque from our MLA, Mr. Hanson, and she was, I think she was in shock a little bit that they gave her the plaque on behalf, to the high school, so it's pretty cool, but she spoke very well. very well, very impressed, and then gave us a chance for Mr. Hogan and myself to talk to Mr. Hanson about this thing with the Wolf Lake area, so, we had a meeting with him the other day, and my biggest take on that is that, when he made a few phone calls, there wasn't too many people that knew about this, so, it's really, even our people in leadership in the province really don't know a lot about this, so, it's very shocking to kind of hear that, so, and then I also attended the Iron River School with Mr. Hogan and Mr. Slipchuck and Mr. Swagert and Mr. Creviac and myself, it was very well attended by the kids, and it was nice to be out, and you open and see kids running around and screaming and having fun, and there's a lot of support from the families there, and it was really good to see that it's gonna be well-used, this playground with that community, so, very impressed, so, that's about it for me.
All right, I guess that's it, and we're gonna go into a closed session, I'm looking for a motion to go into close, yes, councillor Creviac? Okay, welcome back, that kind of concludes our meeting, I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Yeah, councillor Scarsen? I'll call for the vote, or can we do that just by a raise of hands? Yeah, I think we're all shut down. Okay, I'll just call for the vote, and I'll, a raise of hands, please. Carrie, thank you.